Good evening, folks, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting Tuesday, November 7. I'll call the meeting to order. And do we have any declarations of conflicts today? Okay, seeing none, can I get an approval of the agenda? Okay, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Bobby Kenny. All those in favor? Okay, and I might just point out that we have our Planning Manager, David, on the calling in this evening, and we have regrets from Rosemary Hibbert. Okay, so, an adoption of the minutes that would be in your package. Can I get somebody to adopt these minutes? Moved by Counselor Beck. And seconded by Chris Fournier, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to our reports. We have a very heavy agenda this evening, so it's no doubt going to be a long meeting, so hopefully everyone's got something to keep them hydrated during the meeting, and if you do need to leave for a minute to go get something, just give me the heads up that you're heading out, that would be great. So we'll go on to our first report, and Brandon is going to present this, and it's 644 University Avenue, PID 387852, and it's a request to accept the traffic study prepared by Coles Associates Limited and InGlobe Corp. to permit a drive-through for a Tim Hortons restaurant at the subject location. So over to you, Brandon.
Thank you. Yeah, so, right here, we have a request to accept the traffic study prepared by Coles Associates Limited and Globe and Corp. to permit a drive-through for a Tim Hortons restaurant at 644 University Avenue. I'd like to note that this application is solely traffic-related, and the accompanying traffic report provided by experts in the field allows us to assess the overall impact for this proposed drive-through. So currently, the site is occupied by an existing gasoline bar and convenience store. These uses will remain, but an eating and drinking establishment, as Tim Hortons, will be added, which is permitted within the highway commercial zone. The site is currently surrounded by eating and drinking establishments, retail stores, grocery stores, among others, and it fronts onto University Avenue, which is a four-lane arterial roadway. An existing Tim Hortons is located directly across the street from this location. So as per Section 46.8.1 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, council shall determine stacking requirements after receiving input from police, public works, and a traffic consultant. For this application, police and public works indicated that they are satisfied with the traffic study findings and therefore approved the proposed site plan for this drive-through. So the proposed drive-through utilizes a two-lane configuration that can hold to 15 vehicles. It creates sort of a bottleneck as you get to the order windows. Additionally, it utilizes the already-existing access points to University Avenue, so the new ones will not need to be made or approved. Regarding the traffic study, the traffic study observed the pre-drive-through and queuing times at three sever Tim Hortons within Charlottetown. Here, it was found that two of the drive-throughs utilize a two-order lane system as what is proposed for this location, and the longest total queue observed for this study was only six vehicles long. Resultingly, the report deduced that the proposed 15-vehicle-long queuing space at 644 University Avenue should provide more than enough space for the anticipated volume. So the Planning and Heritage Department recommends that Planning Board recommend to council that the application submitted by the owner's agent and subsequent traffic study prepared by Coles Associates Limited and then Globe Corp. dated August 25, 2023, for the development of a drive-through and queuing space at 644 University Avenue for a Tim Hortons eating and drinking establishment be accepted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, for your report. I'll just open it up to the board for any questions. Does anybody have any questions for myself, or Brandon, or David is on the line, if you have any questions for our manager, and we also have our chief planner here, Laurel Palmer Thompson. No questions? Okay. Yes?
The, I noticed that the police have done their thing, and they're okay with it, but the plan is to close out the Tim Hortons on the other side?
Brandon, I don't, I didn't see that in the package.
We don't know yet. It wasn't indicated by anything they told us that they were going to close the current one. I guess we would anticipate that the current one across the street will be closed, and that once this one is built, but they haven't indicated that they're going to do that yet.
But they would still have a drive-through because they have a Wendy's there, so there's still going to be a drive-through on both sides of the street.
Yeah.
Or road, yeah.
Okay.
Any other ques-- Counselor Beck, did you have a question?
No, I'm just going to say it's in, it's mentioned.
Oh, I didn't even see that. Okay. All right, well, if there's no other questions, then can I get somebody to move a resolution to accept staff's recommendation? Moved by Sin, seconded by Counselor Beck. Any questions on the resolution? Okay, question called. All those in favor? Okay, any opposed? Okay, great, unanimously support it, that that will go on to council. Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda, number two, Sonya will present this, and it's Lot 39 Oak Drive, PID 392936, and this is a request to recommend to council to rezone the subject property from--
I think we're in the wrong order earlier, or no?
Well, this is number two. Pardon me?
Number 22. Maybe not, sorry.
Oh, yes, I was, we're in rezoning, and, yeah, 68, I'm sorry, I was too far down the, yeah, so, back up. Okay, this will be Michael's report, 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714. A request to proceed to public consultation to rezone the property located at 68 Royalty Road from light industrial zone to medium-density residential, and to allow for a multi-unit residential development consisting of a mix of townhouses and apartment units on the same site. Over to you, Michael, and welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. This is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone the property located at 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714, from light industrial zone M1 to medium-density residential zone R3, to allow for a proposed multi-unit residential development consisting of a mix of townhouses and apartment dwelling units clustered on the same site. The subject, oh, there we go. The subject site is highlighted in red on the zoning map. The site is within an area of Winslow that has both developed and developing land uses, with existing development to the north and south, and new development occurring to the west of the parcel near Essex Crescent. Oh, sorry, it's skipping a couple of things here. Sorry. Oh. Oh, there we go. I figured it out. Okay. The site is currently undeveloped and wooded. The site has a short frontage on Royalty Road and a longer frontage along Alderwood Avenue. The site has a maritime electric line running overhead, though this line is not protected by a registered easement allowing for maintenance access. The area is serviced for utilities. Royalty Road is also serviced by T3 Bus Service and has a stop near the corner of Alderwood and Royalty Road. The site is bordered by parcels with single-detached dwellings and one with industrial development. It is across roadways from semi-detached dwellings. The application seeks to rezone 68 Royalty Road to R3 Medium Density Residential, which is more in line with the surrounding context. The current land use and zoning are outliers within the surrounding context. The surrounding land use is largely developed or developing residential. Zoning districts within 1 km of the site include low-density districts like R1S, R1L, R2, and R2S, as well as medium-density residential R3. This parcel and the one adjacent to the east are the only industrial parcels north of the bypass and west of Lower Malpeck Road. Permitted uses allowed within M1 zones may have difficulties locating at this location due to lack of supporting infrastructure, and may cause issues with neighboring residential parcels. M1 permitted uses can range from industrial ones such as storage, logistics, and automotive uses, to commercial and service uses as well. The rezoning is being sought by the applicant to accommodate a multi-unit residential development consisting of a mix of townhouses and apartment dwelling uses. The proposed site plan was submitted with this rezoning package, with this rezoning application, and has been reviewed by Planning and Heritage Fire, Public Works, as well as Island Waste Management Corporation and Maritime Electric. The applicant worked closely with these departments and agencies to address concerns, and the current site plan reflects these solutions. All departments and agencies consulted support the current site plan from the perspective of their requirements. The proposed site plan includes two apartment buildings in the middle of the parcel with two blocks of grade-oriented townhouse dwellings facing Alderwood Avenue. The site plan is designed as such to focus a higher-density apartment uses in the center of the site buffered from the surrounding streetscape by townhouse dwellings and natural buffers. So this is the proposal pictured above. You'll see that the driveway runs from Royalty Road through to Alderwood Avenue. It is bounded on each side with parking for the apartment units. There's a gradual increase in density from Alderwood into the center of the site through the townhouses. There is a small park area that is going to be provided at the end of Essex Crescent, and there are a series of natural and hard buffers presented on the boundaries of the site. I just want to note that this is at the rezoning phase, so opportunities do exist to address design concerns at the development permit stage as well. Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation for the request to amend Appendix A, the future land use map, of the City of Charlottetown official plan from industrial to medium-density residential, and to request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw from light industrial M1 to medium-density residential zone R3 for the property located at 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your report. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, it is to go to public consultation, is what the recommendation from staff is.
I'll move that we actually accept staff's recommendation to go to public consultation and hear from the residents.
Okay, Counselor McCabe has moved the resolution. Do I have somebody to second it? Moved by Counselor Beck. Any questions on the resolution? So the resolution is to accept staff's recommendation to proceed to public consultation, and of course, to proceed to council first for their endorsement. So, any questions? Question called. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Great. Okay, thank you, thank you. No, she's sent her regrets. Yeah. Okay, on to the next rezoning. That would be you, Sonya, and it is Lot 39 Oak Drive. Request to recommend to council to rezone the subject property from single-detached residential to low-density residential to allow the construction of a duplex dwelling. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Sonya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from single-detached residential R1L zone to low-density residential R2 zone to construct a new duplex dwelling. Lot 39 Oak Drive is a corner lot which is currently vacant. The total property is approximately 741.5 square meters, site with frontage of approximately 24.93 meters along Oak Drive on the northern boundary. In the surrounding area, we have a mixture of R2 to the northeast and south, and R1L to the northwest and immediately to the west. Along with those zones, we have a mix of single-detached dwellings with some two-unit dwellings throughout that. This is the site plan of the proposed duplex dwelling. Floor plans. And elevations. In accordance with zoning and development bylaws, City Council approved the request to proceed to public consultation on October 10. On October 23, written notification was sent to property owners located within 100 meter of the subject property. A total of 40 letters were sent to residents advising them of this public meeting and requested their written comments. One letter of concern and one letter of objection have been received. The public meeting concerning the application was held on November 1 at the Rott Charlottetown Hotel. Planning staff presented the request, and following the staff presentation, the applicant, JP Robinson, spoke about the proposed development and gave details of the site and the proposed building. Resident Debbie McCar of 120 Oak Drive requested confirmation about the drainage pipe along the rear property boundary, and if an easement exists for the pipe. Mr. Robinson assured that it is in his best interest to ensure that the existing pipe is not disturbed or interfered with during construction, and that the plan is for the location of the footings for the future dwelling to be placed at the same distance from the identified stormwater pipe. The proposal has been found to meet the technical requirements of the zoning and development bylaw and is consistent with the intent and purpose of the city's official plan policies that regard proposed infill development in established neighborhoods. Here is a quick summary of attributes. Some of the positive attributes are that the city is experiencing an increased demand for housing, and this proposal would provide additional options within a mature neighborhood that is predominantly of low-density residential character. The proposed development is close to parks, schools, take-crews, places of worship, and public transit. Additional density without adversely affecting the existing character of the area, and the property is in an area that has municipal services. A few shortcomings are that some residents have responded and expressed that the proposal is out of character with the surrounding properties. Concerns have been raised about an existing drainage pipe locating along the rear property boundary, and if an easement exists for the pipe. This matter has been acknowledged, however, it does not directly concern the proposed zoning change for the subject property. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages that the Planning Board recommend to council to approve the rezoning request for Lot 39 Oak Drive, subject to the following condition: The applicant be required to provide all necessary documents to the satisfaction of-- to the satisfaction of the City of Charlestown for the future building and development permit application to ensure that the proposed duplex dwelling is located and constructed on the subject property at an adequate distance from the existing drainage pipe found along the rear property boundary. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. I think it was agreed to, was it not, that the city was going to look into whether there's an existing easement? And for the sake of everyone in that area, they were going to get that sorted? Was that not discussed at?
Yes, I dropped a message to Public Works, so they're still investigating. And meanwhile, it directly don't affect the rezoning process. And we have added the condition that this will be investigated thoroughly once they submit the development permit application.
Right. Okay.
And one other point, Sonia, was where they talked about the Schedule B and his deed, but there was no Schedule B present. Did we ever find out if there was anything to that concern?
That should be a part of the proponent's deed. So I haven't been able to find out that yet.
So with those questions, would that clarification come before we would give a building permit or whatever when there's those unanswered questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have some history on that actual easement. I was actually the one who handled that subdivision years ago when the Dart Drive subdivision was developed. And at the time, I remember there was a lot of concerns from residents on Oak Drive about drainage from Barber Circle. So the easement was essentially put in, or the pipe was essentially put in to alleviate drainage from Barber Circle, or flowing to Barber Circle. And we do have... I'm going to have to pull the files. They're filed away in our archives. But I can't remember off the top of my head if that was actually an easement granted to the city or if it's a private easement. But something tells me it was a private easement that was gained by the developer's lawyer. I think she actually contacted each property owner to get each one to sign on to that easement. And I think it was an easement between property owners. So if that's the case, it would just be a matter of the developer would have to respect that easement or pipe when he's doing construction.
Thanks, Laurel. I think one of the people that spoke at the public meeting had said that it wasn't listed in any of the neighboring deeds. So that's what their concern was, is that it wasn't in anybody else's deeds?
Yeah, that seems very strange because I remember when that was actually negotiated. So I think when we pull that file, the history on the subdivision, we'll be able to find a little bit more information. But it's going to take a bit of time. But really, this application has nothing to do with that because whether you approve a semi-detached dwelling or duplex dwelling on this property or if it gets developed with its current zoning, the applicant has the right to develop their property in respect of that pipe.
Okay, thank you. Can we just flag this? And I know it has nothing to do with this development, but can we just flag it to make sure that we see this through to the end? Because I do think that that evening when David did indicate to the resident who was concerned that this would be, that a positive solution would come to that, which made the residents pleased and a little bit more confident.
Yes, Madam Chair. For my own interest, I'd like to pull the file to find out what's going on because I specifically remember working on that. But if it is a private easement, then they would have to... Like if it wasn't registered, they would have to negotiate that between the property owners. Because we only deal with easements that are on public land unless there are easements that are granted specifically for city infrastructure.
I think that's what she thought, that the city put that in and there was no real records. And so it will be great to have that clarified because then we can at least come back to the property owner with the correct information if that's exactly how it went down.
Yes, through the chair. From memory, I don't believe the city installed the easement, but I could be wrong, and I have been wrong in the past.
I think one other thing was that there was a lack of confusion or understanding in terms of, if I remember from the meeting, as to, like, the residents didn't even know what was going on. And it was actually other residents who brought it to their attention. So I think there was, I think there's a lot of clearing up that has to happen with that. And I think if you start digging back through the files, Laurel, we'll probably start seeing, the picture will become clearer. And it was good that that resident did bring it to the attention at the public meeting the other night because I think we do have a responsibility to make sure that that does get sorted out. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? So the Planning and Heritage Department does encourage the Planning Board to recommend that City Council approve the rezoning. So do I have anyone that would like to move that resolution? Okay, moved by Paul Conley, seconded by Jacque. All those... Oh, question on the resolution. All those in favor? Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, back to my agenda. Okay, our next item on the agenda is 199 Grafton Street. And that's Laurel. This is a request to proceed to public consultation concerning a request for a site-specific exemption to increase the height of a proposed apartment building from six stories to eight stories in the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone. Over to you, Laurel.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of Planning Board. This is a revised design for 199 Grafton Street for a proposed eight-story multi-residential building consisting of six stories of apartment buildings on top of a two-story parking garage at grade, and it also contains two levels of underground parking. This is the subject property outlined in black. The site plan, the building will stretch from Hillsborough across Clark Street over to Prince. So the proposal includes a variance under a site-specific exemption to exceed bonus heights requirements in the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone. And if, I don't know if you'll remember, but some of you were on the board in 2021, and this application was before the board at that time for a six-story apartment building. At the time, it received approval from council through a site-specific amendment to construct the building with bonus height. And there was an additional variance for 10 feet, three meters, to exceed bonus height. The applicant has indicated in their submission that the current proposal is to incorporate 32 affordable housing units and 126 market units, which would be a total unit count of 158 units. In 2021, the proposal also received design review approval for a six-story building. And the application for a site-specific exemption to exceed the requirements under Section 32, 30.2 Regulations for Permitted Uses Maximum Height. So they're asking to exceed the maximum heights requirement in the zoning and development bylaw and to exceed the bonus height requirements also. So if they're allowed to exceed bonus height, bonus height is allowed to go to a maximum of six stories. And the height of the building is 18.5, which would be 18.5 meters, 60.7 feet in the downtown mixed-use neighborhood. That was the height that we've already approved through bonus height. If we allow the additional height to proceed, we would be exceeding bonus height by two stories. The total height would be 88 feet, 26.8 meters. So in 2021, the city's planning committee approved bonus height based on public benefits of 12 affordable housing units. In that submission, they indicated that the additional height they were requesting would allow them to provide, in their current request, I should say, the additional height will allow them to provide 32 affordable housing units and 126 market units. So they're increasing what they, the affordable unit count that they were approved in 2020. So the bylaw requirements, Section 30 Downtown Mixed Use Neighborhood outlines the minimum and maximum requirements for the permitted uses in the zone. And in the 2021 request, the project was exempted from various requirements under those zone requirements. The variances covered under the 2021 site-specific exemption that were granted by council, they're still in effect for the building components. So even though they're applying for this additional height variance under the site-specific amendment, we still have to honor the ones that are already approved because we do have a development agreement on that application. So due to the complexity of the project and the substantive nature of the height exemption that is currently being requested, this application cannot proceed through a major variance process, which is normally what we would do if an applicant asks for a height variance. The process for site-specific exemption, it's a much more robust process. We would examine all variances under one application. And the reason why we proceed with a site-specific exemption is public consultation is also required for that process. So it gives the public some opportunity to comment other than just a regular variance process where we would send out notification letters. Basically, this would follow the same process as a bylaw amendment. So the applicant, in the submission, they've submitted a written and graphic submission containing concept drawings, elevations, floor plans, and a site plan of the proposed multi-unit building. So these plans here, this is the original proposal. And then on the right would be the revised proposal. So I'm just going to flip through those. It gives you a little bit of an idea on the height, scale of the building. And each one of these slides shows the building from the same perspective on the street. This is Hillsborough Street side. We originally had this project come through. This was the slide that we were given, or the concept drawing for Hillsborough Street. But this one, it's a little bit different perspective now, it's face-on. So you get a little bit more idea on the height. So this proposal, it was also required to undergo a design review process. It was sent to an independent design reviewer to perform a design analysis. One of the main concerns identified by the reviewer was in relation to mass and scale of the building with respect to the streetscape. The reviewer commented that the top two floors of the eight-story proposal are stepped back, should be stepped back to achieve the 45-degree angular plane as required under Section 30.32 of the bylaw. So I'm just going to flip to that. This is the, this is what the design reviewer is talking about here. So you'll see the various steps of the building. This would be Prince Street. Down here would be a parking garage, which would allow the building to be stepped back about 18 feet. And then this is the angular plane that he's referring to. He indicated that if this option is not desirable, then a variance will be required to override the bonus height development standards regarding that 45-degree angular plane. Another option that was suggested by the reviewer was to extend the east end of the building closer to Hillsborough Street to compensate for the units that would be lost during construction. So if you look at the bottom slide, if the building isn't allowed to be constructed to eight stories, which is this outline here, then the reviewer suggested extending it back towards Hillsborough Street because currently, in the current proposal, this area is a parking garage, and it extends quite a distance back on Clark Street, and there is no building built over that portion. So there was, in the reviewer's report, there was also recommendations in respect to windows and the facade along the parking garage on Hillsborough Street. The recommendation was to match the facade on Prince Street. So overall, the project was recommended for approval by both the design reviewer and the design review board. The applicant has agreed with the requested changes with the exception to the step back on the seventh and eighth floors to the 45-degree angular plane. So therefore, an additional variance is required if the applicant is to proceed without stepping the building back on the seventh and eighth story. So the subject property, it's unique. It's bounded by four streets. You can see the streets. It's bounded by Clark Street, Hillsborough, Grafton, and Prince. Due to its location behind the existing Grafton Place Building, we all know it also is the Poli Clinic Building, which is right here in the purple. It's used predominantly, or due to its location behind Grafton Street and its location along Clark Street, Clark Street's used predominantly as a laneway behind the buildings, which run on Kent Street. And so we would consider this proposal to be an infill mid-block. The location of the building mid-block, it does help to diminish the scale of the building with its not being set directly on the street. As with previous applications, from the perspective of planning staff, the primary consideration in this proposal is whether the requested exemptions to increase the height will negatively impact the adjacent properties in this area. Staff are most concerned with the interface of the proposed building with the existing apartment building that's going, that's located along 142 to 142, 46 Prince Street. So the smaller building that would be located just here, you can see it tucked in. The existing smaller apartment on Prince Street, it's located approximately 3.9 feet from its respective property boundary. And the new building is currently proposed to be stepped back 18 feet where it rises to six stories. The applicant's requested to increase the height at this location at eight stories next to this smaller building on Prince Street. The bylaw, as I stated earlier, it requires that 45-degree angular step back. And the Design Review Board did recommend for the height increase to eight stories pending that step back along the Prince Street facade. So with respect to parking, the proposal removes the existing parking lot, which had 88 spaces. And that was located behind the Poli Clinic Building. So this area, all here in white, is parking. With the requested increase in height, the developer's proposing to increase the parking to a total of 232 spaces. Of these spaces, 109 are dedicated to residents that will live in the building. And there's proposed five barrier-free spaces, and 118 are to serve commercial users. The developer is proposing to meet requirements for the new development and replace the parking with, within the building and underground. So there's two levels of underground parking. If the application goes to planning, to public hearing, planning staff and council will hear the concerns from the adjoining property owners. We can't really determine the outcome of residents' comments at this point, but we feel that if we take it forward to Planning Board or to a public consultation, it will give us the opportunity to hear from the residents and gauge their opinions and see if they are in support of this building and the additional height on that site. So with that, we are recommending support for the application to move forward to public consultation pending the design reviewer's recommendations and the design review board's approval. I can take any questions if there's any?
Thanks, Laurel. Anyone have any questions? Counselor Beck?
Laurel, can you go back to the...
Laurel, can you go back to the rendering there that has the angular setback on the It showed a cross-section, it was a cross-sectional view there, would have been from looking north?
I think the one on Kent Street?
It's the one that would have been, it would showed the two options that the design reviewer put forth.
Oh, okay, yeah. Right here.
Yeah, that's it. So on option one, we're requiring the angular setback on the Prince Street side of the building, but we don't require it on the Hillsborough side of the building. Is that because, under the proposal, it's set further back enough from the street? Is that, is that the reason why it's allowed to go straight up there like that?
Yes, that's correct. The, if you'll see the parking garage, when you're standing on Hillsborough Street, you probably, it wouldn't really make much difference, that angular step-back.
Sure.
But on the, or the Hillsborough side, I mean, but when you're standing on Prince Street and you're looking up, and especially for the dwelling that's located next to it, this would help to alleviate some of that bulk and mass because it's also, you know, adjacent to a smaller property. So that was one of the recommendations, and the other recommendation is to...
Go straight back.
Just straight back across the parking garage. Now, the applicant wasn't in support of it either, and they, they did stress that they, you know, they didn't want to construct with that step-back because they felt it would, with their plans, their lobby is in, apparently, in this area, and they said the elevator is also in that area, so they have to move the elevator back. So they didn't, they really didn't want to do that, but that, but they, they would have to be granted a variance in order to be exempt from that.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Bobby.
There's no surface parking.
No, the only surface parking, and if you remember it from the last proposal, there are a few spaces out here on the corner, and they were mainly allocated towards the Poli Clinic Building for some doctors that was in the, that's what they discussed in the original proposal. But it's all like, you know, it's all within this whole site area. But for this building, the actual parking is at grade or underground.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll move that we accept staff's recommendation to go to public consultation.
Okay. Do we have anyone that would like to second it by Bobby Kenny? Any questions on the, on the resolution, which is to accept staff's recommendation to proceed to council for public consultation? All those in favor? Oh, did you have a question? Go ahead, Jackie.
I was just wondering, what information will the public be provided with at the public consultation meeting? Like, would things around, like, traffic impact or things like that sort of stuff be provided to them to be able to inform their decision? Or will it really just be like, do you like this or not?
Well, at the public meeting, it's up to the developer to defend their application. The last time we brought this forward, we consulted with the public works manager, and there wasn't a need for a traffic study for that proposal. I don't believe there is in this instance either, but for the most part, it will be, I mean, the, the big thing that we have to look at at this point is the height of the building. Is it appropriate for the downtown? I mean, they are requesting to exceed bonus height considerably, so when we, when we did develop the 500 lot plan and the waterfront plan, we identified areas within the downtown core that was appropriate for height, and we delegated specific heights for those areas. So what we did was, we brought in form-based code, which is a different way of applying zoning regulations. So we, with form-based code, we don't determine how many units are permitted per lot, like on a lot. It's up to the applicant to determine that. So we made it more flexible, and we allowed bonus heights. So in order to get bonus heights, they had to give a public benefit. Affordable housing was one of the public benefits that was approved through the plan. When we approved public benefit, or when we approved bonus heights, that was to be the cap for height within the downtown. Variances weren't to be permitted with bonus height. Since then, we brought in an application, or regulations in the bylaw for site-specific amendments. So developers have been applying for that, but I think the main concern and what the public is going to, you know, talk about is the height of the building. Is it appropriate? Does it fit in? It is a high building. One thing I will say that does give me comfort with this, it is an infill development, and it isn't along the streetscape, so it is set back considerably within the center of the block. The properties that would be most affected would be the residential properties that are adjacent on Hillsborough and Prince. Prince Street would be the most affected. And then there are some, there are a couple of properties along Clark Street that do face Clark Street. So those are all kind of things that I think will come up at the public meeting, and then the developer will have to address that.
Thank you. Thanks for your question, Jackie. Go ahead, Counselor McCabe. Did you have a question? Oh, oh, okay. Any other questions before we call the question? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, any opposed? Great, okay. You unanimously support it to head to council for council's vote on whether this goes to public consultation or not. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor, I just need to point out before the next application's read, the wrong ward number is indicated on the application, Laurel, and I know that we had to backtrack on a wrong PID number. I'm sure it's just a typo, but I just want to point out that this next application on 421 St. Peters Road would be Ward 9, not Ward 8.
Okay. We'll make note of that and change it.
Thank you for that. So our next application is, be presented by David, and it's 421 St. Peters Road. Request to proceed to public consultation to rezone the subject property from low-density residential to highway commercial to permit a double drive-through for a coffee shop at the subject location. So I believe David is on the phone.
Hello, everybody. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Great, great. So good evening, members of planning board. The following application concerns property located at 421 St. Peters Road on the northeast corner of the intersection of St. Peters Road and Angus Drive. I'll just ask our planner, Deegan, there in the room, just to forward the slides. I'll just say next slide when we're ready to go to the next slide. So this is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone the lands located at 421 St. Peters Road from the R2 zone to the highway commercial C2 zone to allow for expansion of an existing drive-through, to go from a single-lane drive-through to a double-lane drive-through for an existing coffee shop that is to be expanded on the lands addressed as 419 St. Peters Road. Subject property at 421 St. Peters Road, as I mentioned, is currently in the R2 zone, and it previously contained a single-detached dwelling on the property, and the intention is to expand the existing commercial use to the south to encompass these lands for the expanded drive-through. Next slide, please, Deegan. So the existing conditions, as mentioned, current land use is residential, zoned low-density residential R2. The main site adjacent to this parcel contains an existing petrocan gas station with an accessory convenience store, restaurant, which is a Mr. Sub, as well as a coffee shop and an existing drive-through. The surrounding land uses are predominantly all low-density residential uses within the R1L and R2 zone, predominantly being single-detached, as well as a mix of semi-detached units. The frontage for the subject property is along a main arterial roadway being St. Peters Road, also known as Provincial Road, Highway 2. Next slide, please, Deegan. The zoning and development bylaw also has regulations contained with it that regard queuing spaces. So this is another part of the zoning bylaw which concerns the application before you tonight. In, with the regulations contained under Section 46.8, it stipulates that council shall determine stacking requirements after receiving input from police and public works and/or from a traffic consultant. So this is an overlapping regulation in the zoning bylaw that would come to bear here in terms of our analysis, evaluation, and council's consideration of the application. Next slide, please, Deegan. Again, the land use proposal here is to expand the drive-through in order to have two order lanes with a total of 14 queue spaces that would utilize an existing road access onto St. Peters Road. Next slide, please, Deegan. In terms of attempting to justify the application on part of the applicants, the applicants did complete a technical traffic study report. It looked at four other drive-through coffee shop locations. Two were in Charlottetown, one in Montague, and one in Dartmouth, Nova Scotia, during peak morning periods of business. Only one of the four Tim Hortons did utilize a two-order lane system, and the traffic study in this case, among the four different locations, observed the longest total queue during the 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM peak morning period to be six vehicles long at any given time. And again, the proposal here is to have a double queue that could accommodate up to 14 vehicles total. The traffic study did conclude that the proposed 14-vehicle-long queuing area for 421 St. Peters Road would provide sufficient space to accommodate expected customer demand during peak hours, the peak morning period of business. Next slide, please. In terms of comments that we've received to date, and these are reflected in our report to planning board tonight, City Public Works responded, saying that they were in support based on the traffic report and information received, and that they have no further concerns. City Fire also responded. They do have concern for traffic accessing from St. Peters Road, and expressed that they're in favor of design concept number two. This was one of two concepts that were provided in the traffic report, and this is reflected by, by the concept that we evaluated. Lastly, Prince Edward Island Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, DTI, did review. They reviewed initial concept and provided feedback on what would be acceptable, given that Route 2, Highway 2, is a corridor under their jurisdiction, and they have authority as the corridor managers to manage access on and off of that corridor from private lands. They said they, one of the main comments that they provided was that the main drive-through entrance from Peters Road onto the site must be a single lane only, and, and this requirement that they forwarded to the city is reflected in the current site plan design. Next slide, please. So to conclude, the Planning and Heritage Department is encouraging that the planning board recommend to council to proceed to public consultation for the request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential zone R2 to highway commercial zone C2 for the portion of the property, that should say portion of the site, being the property located at 421 St. Peters Road, PID number 464586. So that's a summary of the proposal and information received to date, and I'll turn it back over to the chair to be on hand to answer any questions that chair and members of the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your report. Questions from the board? Counselor McCabe, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, David, for your report. I know there'll be some people that will certainly have concerns with the application to rezone because it wasn't that long ago when I think that was a big piece of the Angus Drive extension, when the province came in with the roundabout proposal, was they had tried at that point to rezone the property, and we clearly put that to rest because of the busyness of Mel's already. We forgot the liquor store would be probably the busiest part of Mel's, so I don't know if Mr. Subs takes in as much business as the Liquor Depot, but at that time, we shut it down, and knowing full well, it's, I don't even know if it's been a year since, maybe a year and a half since we've had roundabouts, and we're now back looking again. So for clarification, I just wanted to, Laurel, by rezoning from the R2, what pretty much limits them, there's not a lot of space back there anyway. I don't even know, unless they're buying land off the property owners behind, how they'd ever get two queues in there. But what would a C2 zone if we changed this? What else could happen? So when they had indicated they weren't going to change their parking lot, and they weren't going to look for more retail expansion, would that then open up this property for, or David, for expansion for more retail?
Which would you prefer, through the chair?
Clarification from either you or David, whichever?
Speaking from memory, this application, the last time we dealt with it, we rezoned the piece of property next to the roundabout as parking to limit the uses on the site. This is the, on the opposite side of the property, so they're asking for this additional piece. They had bought this piece at that, I think about three, four years ago, and they didn't proceed with a request at that time because they had concerns that it would not be approved. So they basically put it on hold until the roundabout was installed and the upgrades to St. Peters Road happened. So now they're, they're back. So the C2 zone does include a number of, of uses. I haven't worked on this application, but, and maybe David can inform you more on that, but to my knowledge, they are just going to proceed with the, the drive-through because that is their, you know, their intent for their business is, is to increase the drive-through and...
Could they, site-specific, like exempt, site-specific for a drive-through purpose only without rezoning the whole property? Would that still meet them? You know, if that's what their intent is, to just have a drive-through, could they, could they do a site-specific variance for that drive-through use versus, because I'm assuming you're talking about the whole house next door, that whole property that they own to the right, that they're looking to rezone to a C2 now?
They could apply for site-specific. I mean, council does have the opportunity through that section of the bylaw to, to approve properties specifically for certain uses through that site-specific amendment section. You know, should they...
There were so many promises to the residents at the time. There would be no trucks riding on Angus Drive. There would be, you know, all of this, and it's, it's just not how it went down. And I think that, for me, I won't be supporting any change of zone use after we heard very loud and clear from the residents in that area, and I feel that we've changed their whole area, their scope. We've added this new traffic through. So I won't be supporting it moving forward. I mean, it's always good to hear from the public, but it's just more disruption when they're barely settled. And we very clearly indicated at that time, we weren't looking at rezoning for more expansion for business at that property location.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Any other questions, comments for either David or for Laurel? So right now, this is just to, to move on to council for council's decision on public consultation. Do I have a resolution?
I'll move that.
Okay, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Paul Conley. Any questions on the resolution? Okay, so all those in favor of moving on to...
I just have a comment. David, could you provide me with a clear list of if this was rezoned, what that would, before we get to council? Could you include that for me?
During the chair, Counselor McCabe, I could certainly forward that complete list to you after the meeting, so you have the full, full picture of that, yeah?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so all those in favor of this proceeding to council for approval on public consultation? Okay. Any opposed? Okay, one, one in opposition, that is Counselor McCabe. So thank you very much. So thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the, and we do have the architects here with us today, Bill and Robert. And this is for 115 Murchison Lane. And this is a request to proceed to public consultation to amend the current development concept plan and development agreement for the subject property to develop a new medical treatment, mental health facility. And Laurel will be presenting this. Thank you.
The current development concept plan for this property, it was approved subject, approved by resolution of council on September 14th, 2020, subject to a development agreement for this property, as outlined here. At the time, the property was rezoned from institutional zone and Business Park Industrial Zone M3 to comprehensive development area zone in order to permit the development of an acute care health campus. Combined, the subject properties are approximately 33 hectares, or 81.5 acres, and they have frontage along Murchison Lane, Promenade and Drive, and Deacon Grove Lane. To the north of the subject properties are land owned by the French School Board, right here. To the east of the subject properties are the Hillsborough River. And to the west are lands that are zoned, institutional zone that contain the Queen Elizabeth Hospital. In September of 2020, the property was rezoned to assemble the land under one zone to facilitate the construction of a new mental health campus and Addictions Care, acute care facility, Life Skills Center, as well as a mixed-use development of approximately 11 to 12 acres along the northern boundary of PID number 452892. The property was rezoned to CDA to allow for more flexibility to accommodate a mixed-use urban campus-style development as outlined in the original master plan. And this is the original master plan. The hospital and the acute care, or the Life Skills Center is to the north. So after the initial approval of the master plan, two buildings shown on the original development concept plan, Building 1 and 2, were constructed for social housing. These two buildings to the northwest. Oh, just below?
Just below the road, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I do have the wrong two, right here. So the province is now moving ahead to phase two of the master plan, and they've developed drawings and concepts for two new buildings proposed in the stage of the site development. This is the new concept plan. So they're looking to construct Building 3, which is social housing, public safety housing, and Building 4, which would be the new mental health addictions and acute care facility. So this is the acute care facility, and this is social housing. So during development of the architectural and site plans for these facilities, the consultants determined that the initial sighting of the building and location of parking for both facilities is depicted on the original concept plan. They did not work logistically with the plans when they refined them. So if you see here, the hospital is very much, it's, it kind of, I'll explain it later, but it turns its back towards the water more. And then this building is, they're more 90-degree to the road. So the consultants, they've submitted a revised concept plan, and they've requested an amendment to the approved concept plan and the development agreement. The proposed changes mainly include rotating Building 3 and Building 4 to provide on-encumbered views for patients of the Hillsborough River to the south and east. So the building's been turned, and they have a view down to the river along the south and the east. And the Life Skills Center is also turned, so it's not looking at the back of the hospital. It actually has a view out along the road down towards the harbor as well. So the proposed changes mainly include rotating these buildings. And if the revised concept plan is approved, the majority of rooms in the new hospital would face the water as opposed to a parking lot. There's also a proposal to move the parking area that was shown in the original concept plan to the eastern side of Deacon Grove Lane. So the parking lot is now going over here. In the original proposal, parking was down here. Staff identified the location of the parking lot and the orientation of the buildings as a concern in the original report that went to Planning Board. We had concerns with the way the building was sighted on the property. We felt that the property is a prominent size. It holds historical significance. And it was also identified as a significant area in the East Royalty Master Plan. The orientation of the hospital in the original concept plan, it seemed to turn its back on the waterfront as opposed to facing the waterfront. In the original report, planning staff stated that it is more appropriate to locate parking away from patients' views and to orient the facility towards the water side of the property. However, it should be noted that relocation of the parking lot to the east side of Deacon Grove Lane will result in the removal of Building G, as shown on the original development concept plan. Building G is right about here. And it is undetermined at this time if that building will be relocated someplace else on the site. And if they do decide later on to relocate it, we will work with the government and their consultants to ensure that that change would also go forward. So the zoning and development bylaw stipulates the process for amending an approved development concept plan. The process follows the same requirements as outlined in the bylaw for a bylaw amendment. And basically, before council approves or amends a development concept plan, the CDA zone, a public meeting shall be called. And it's treated as it was a bylaw amendment. Changes to a development concept plan that do not change the approved intent or use of the lot, such as minor additions to a building or a lot subdivision or consolidation, would be considered a minor amendment. Because of the nature of this application, it was considered a major amendment, so we did have to take it forward, and that's the reason why it's before you today. So with the application, the applicant has submitted on behalf of the Department of Health and Wellness a letter outlining the rationale for these proposed changes, along with a detailed master plan. If council chooses to amend the existing development concept plan and adopt the revised development concept plan for the property, the existing development agreement would also have to be amended. The development agreement outlines the terms and conditions of the approval and how the development is to be carried out over time. Staff have also examined the official plan, and we feel that there's various sections in the official plan that supports this proposal. I've included those sections within the report. Some of those are related to healthcare initiatives, housing needs, and variety. So the province has rezoned this site and developed a concept plan for this property to replace the existing Hillsborough Hospital. It's been there for a number of years. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. The existing, as well as the proposed concept plan, it includes buildings and uses to address the needs of various people who live in our island community that have special needs. The concept for this site proposes a development mix that aims to provide a mindset of social integration for the patients and that reside within these facilities. Staff are of the opinion, this amendment to the existing development concept plan, it does not change the overall intent of the original plan, and we feel that it actually is a benefit to changing the location of the sighting of the hospital and the parking lot. And we are therefore recommending for approval to proceed to public consultation. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them. And our consultants for the project are also here as well.
Thank you, Laurel. Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Paul.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering, looking at the original concept plan, the main hospital component didn't take any advantage of the view that would be available from the Hillsborough River. Then there's a revised concept plan that angles it a little bit more toward the water. But why would that not? I mean, the longest part of the building, it seems to me, would be the area where residents and patients would, you know, benefit the most from, I mean, there's really a panoramic view there of the Hillsborough River that the building doesn't seem to be taken advantage of.
Yes, through the chair. If you look at the original proposal, it was very much at a 90-degree to the river. So, and parking was located right on the site. So one of the things that I raised in the original proposal, and the consultants that originally worked on the proposal, not the current ones, I voiced concerns that the way they were designing the hospital, it felt like the hospital was backing on to the river. So patients wouldn't have that view of the river when they were, you know, they were sitting in the facility. The original proposal, I think, incorporated a rooftop garden or something where they were gonna, you know, have an outdoor area to take people outside. But with this new proposal, and the architects can address this more so than I can. Sorry, I'm just gonna go ahead. But this side also has, you know, a nice view this way. This end of the building also looks down towards the river and also east. So there's, you know, you've got west, south, and east, really, along this whole coastline. And removing that parking takes, you know, would you want to sit in a hospital and look at a parking lot full of vehicles? Or would you rather look at a green lawn and, you know, the water, which is, you know, which is better for your mental health? So I think this is definitely of benefit to orient the building. It's just staff were not in a position to sign off on the application, the changes, because it is an approved development concept plan with an associated development agreement. Any changes that are that significant had to come back through the board and council. So that's why it is here.
Were both plans developed by the same company?
No, I believe the first set of plans was an architectural firm out of Ontario. And this project is currently with a local firm, Sable Arc Studios, and they are here. So they can, they could probably address your questions more so than I can when it comes to design. I have included some slides of the design of the hospital, and it may be better if they give you a quick overview of the proposal.
Okay. Bill, is it Bill?
That's correct.
Bill is going to clarify a few things for us. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Laurel. I used the pointer. Actually, can we go back, can we go back to the previous slide?
Oh, you have it there.
Okay. I'll just explain some of the planning to the logic on the site plan. Maybe that will help explain some of the decisions behind the design. Can you go to the site plan itself, the concept plan? Thank you. And if I can, the pointing component out.
That's point, that's forward, that's back.
Thank you.
You're good.
As you can see, there's tremendous views out towards Hillsborough River to the east. What's happened with the design is we've moved the parking up across the street, Deacon Grove Lane, and then provided what will be terrific sightlines from these wings, these two appendages here that have prominent views. And those are predominantly the resident rooms, the treatment rooms and resident stay rooms. To the north, facing the road and along the drop-off is the public access and administrative zones. Similarly, with the other smaller building, the social housing building, those, the long appendage, again, features resident rooms all with views on towards the river and on to this landscape green space to the front. So it forms really what becomes an urban plaza, courtyard to the front of the arrival zone for both buildings. So we felt that was a very important move architecturally to improve views for the residents. It's all about providing better access to mental health, well-being, and certainly views to nature and green spaces accommodate that. Moving ahead. That's moving back. You can see here in these two renderings, these bird's-eye views, presentations of the renderings of what we're proposing for the both buildings. You can see to the foreground here. I'm not sure if the pointer's working. Yep. Thank you again. Here we go. The foreground, arrival zone, drop-off zone, front plaza, administrative, public zones. It's cafe inside here, accessible for the public. And then there's a foreground, arrival zone for day patients coming into the smaller social housing with a day program as well. There are also rooftop plaza areas that do offer views, again, on towards the river and green space. And you're seeing more of this in a slightly different configuration in the development of that parking lot. Across the street, again, providing eyes on the street and quick access into the doorways themselves.
I'm not an expert on this at all, but it just seems to me that the building, the most important building, is perpendicular to the river rather than facing.
I hope I explained it in the sense that we have a front-door access point. And the most important part to the building is really the residents' rooms and their views. And with the removal of the Hillsborough, the existing hospital, and turning it over to the green space, we now have the south and east views for these resident rooms in both buildings.
Thank you. Any other questions for, oh, go ahead, Laurel?
Something that I might be able to clarify that might ease your mind more. The original proposal had the loading bays and parking lot on the riverside of the property as opposed to the residents' rooms. So that's a major improvement. And that was our concern with the original proposal. Why would you put the loading bays and parking on that side of the building? That's the most, you know, significant part of the site.
Great. Any other questions or any other comments from the architects?
I'll move to accept to go to public consultation.
Okay. Moved by Council McCabe, and seconded by Jackie, that we accept staff's recommendation to proceed to public consultation, and of course, to council first. So any question on the resolution? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, unanimously support it, head on to council. So thank you for that. So our final item on the agenda is some housekeeping amendments to our zoning and development bylaw. Request to recommend that the Planning Board recommend to council that the following proposed housekeeping amendments to the zoning and development bylaw be recommended for approval. And I believe, Deegan, you are going to give us an overview of these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So today's agenda for the report is as we go through the proposed amendments to various sections of our zoning and development bylaw. We'll be discussing the changes to the tables, the sequence of information, alphabetical order, new additions of our amendments, definitions, and revision made to the existing definitions. Let's start with the Section 47.12.4, where we recommended in paragraph number 3 have replaced in accordance with 5.12.4A with an accordance with 47.5.1D. Moving on to Section 47.14, an electronic sign table. In paragraph 5 of the general provisions column, we recommended to replace 5.14.4 shall not apply with 47.4.3 shall... apply as highlighted. In section 8.1, we recommended updating the zones table to include the manufactured housing residential as an additional zone under the residential land use category with MHR as the corresponding symbol. Additionally, in the same zones table, we are recommending to repeal section 8.1.1 and replace it with new numbering system to align with the land use zone numbering as shown on the screen. Also, as depicted on the screen, in section 46, we have replaced the general provisions for parking table with one that is arranged in alphabetical order by use for easier reading. Now let's address some recommended changes to use as regulations. Recommendations of section 19.1.1 to replace with apartments as a permitted use and new section 19.1.2 be added in account for this change. The same revisions made to the section 20.1.1 as well. We also recommending to removing and revising some sections to support our new STR bylaw. Section 5.9 concerning tourist accommodation as a home occupation under section 5.9.3 is being removed. Section 5.11, which address bed and breakfast and home occupations as type of tourist accommodations under section 5.11.1, will be removed. We're also recommending eliminating section 5.11.1A, which require tourist accommodation to be single detached dwelling only. Section 5.11.2 dealing with maximum gross floor area will be replaced with regulations for tourist accommodations. Furthermore, section 5.11.4 will be replaced by section 5.11.3, removing home occupations as a type of tourist accommodation and adding the requirements to obtain a provincial license. Next, we are recommending to introducing a new amendment, section 47.3 addressing prohibited signs, and adding section 4.3.1J to include signs with obscene, offensive, discriminatory, or misleading content to resolve the issue of putting a sign on public right-of-way. Regarding this, we will finalize the exact wording before public meeting once we get the confirmation from our legal team. Also, section 37.1, which deals with port zone, is recommended to be updated to include section 37.1.8 hosting events as a Port Charlotte Town requested to consider the hosting events as well. In appendix A, we are recommending new definitions for authority having jurisdictions, occupancy, residential occupancy, obscene content, discriminatory content, housing event. Additionally, we have revised the, additionally, we have revised the definitions of dwelling unit, heritage in, long-term rentals, short-term rentals, tourist accommodation, tourist home to make them clearer and more supportive of the terms in city zoning and development bylaw. All these needed changes in definition will be assist us in regulating the STR bylaw. All these recommended amendments are aimed to improving the clarity and effectiveness of city's regulation. I appreciate your time to these proposed changes, and we look forward to your feedback and input as we move forward with these updates and board's approval to take all these recommendations to the public meeting. Thank you.
So is this to move to, this is a request to proceed to public consultation for this too?
Yeah.
Or just to council?
No, public consultation.
I mean, board to council that following proposed amendment recommended for approval. So it doesn't say that in the, I don't see that. It just says to request, to recommend that the Planning Board recommend to council that the following proposed housekeeping amendments to the zoning and development bylaw be recommended for approval. So does it go to public consultation or just to council?
Yes, Madam Chair, it is required to go to public consultation, and I believe Deegan is bringing it here tonight to gauge some of your opinions on the proposed amendments. And if there is anything that would need to, that you feel needs to be changed, or you have input, you can send that to the Planning Department, and we can tweak those changes prior to proceeding to public consultation. As well, they are awaiting some feedback from legal counsel on a couple of definitions that were in the bylaw.
So is this today just for information and discussion?
For the most part. We are asking for the board's support to public consultation, but if there are changes that need to be done, then we would do that before we would proceed to move forward with public consultation.
Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, so at the moment, this is not, I mean, you're not putting it up for public consultation, you're just gauging feedback from the council. So this is, the request is inconsistent with what you're looking for at the moment?
Yes, I believe, like, we are gauging, we are gauging opinions from the board at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, so tonight, we are not recommending for council to move this on to public consultation?
I believe that is correct. We should, because if there are, if there are changes that need to be done, we would need to, we would need to do that before we bring it back to the board. If the board has any input on the proposed amendments, they should let the department know. Usually, it's a collaborative process, so if you do have concerns, or you have comments, or if you feel everything is great, then you should let us know, and then we will just, you know, we'll either move it forward or make the changes.
Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in that case, this should be, the language here should be amended, because if I'm not mistaken, agenda becomes part of public record, right?
Yes, we should amend that.
Thank you.
What are we amending?
Yes, the recommendation.
Right. So what should read is that the request to recommend that the Planning Board recommend to council that the following proposed housekeeping amendments to the zoning and development bylaw be recommended for public consultation. Is that the idea? Is that what we're amending?
Yes, that's what it should say. It's not approval, because it has to go through public consultation before.
Okay.
And we also want to gauge the board's opinions before we get it there, so.
Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you. I did have two things highlighted. First was just with the first two recommendations, I couldn't really tell what the difference, like, what was the change? Like, the things around 5.14.4 shall not apply, 47.4.3 shall apply. I was just curious what those, that shift in numbers meant. But then my second, my second one that I noted earlier was around residential occupancy and feeling like the language around that maybe needed to shift slightly. Reading it as I, reading it as it is, I feel like a hotel or something like that could qualify. It just says a building or part of a building where people sleep, and they're not involuntarily detained. So I feel like maybe there needs to be something adjusted there to reflect that it belongs to the homeowner or something like that. That was the only feedback that I had.
Yeah, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Yeah, and we'll discuss with our legal team as well to choose the wording. Yeah.
Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this case, I suggest that, you know, before going to public consultation, maybe we should get the legal fee, you know, the legal review and the changes, and this can be discussed internally at the board, and we should not adopt this resolution. Maybe this can come back to the council again when, with all the changes necessary, and then take those changes to the public, the final presentation to the public.
Thanks, Sin. So what you're saying is really until we have a completed package ready to go, we should send it back to the staff to get everything completed before we recommend to go to council to proceed to public consultation?
That's right.
Okay. Is that the will of the board? It makes sense. Does that make sense to you, Laurel?
Yes, Madam Chair, that makes sense.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. And in the meantime, if reviewing this, you have any other suggestions, then it gives you that opportunity to continue the communication with the staff to add other recommendations for housekeeping in terms of changes to the zoning and development bylaw. Go ahead, Jackie.
Thanks. I just had one more question. I was wondering if you could explain a little bit about the short-term rental definition? The portion of a dwelling unit, the part that's getting me, that serves as the operator hosts principal residence for a continuous period of less than one month? Couldn't a short-term rental still be something that serves as their principal residence for more than one month? I'm just a bit confused around that wording.
Sorry. Can you repeat?
Sure. I was just wondering if you could explain the wording a little bit around the short-term rental definition? The part that is kind of confusing me is where it says it serves as the operator or hosts principal residence for a continuous period of less than one month? I'm just wondering, like, what exactly that means? And couldn't a short-term rental be a residence that is also the operator's home for more than one month? Or, I was just wondering if you could explain that definition a little bit more.
So it's like, it's supposed to be where is operating or hosting the guest, primary residence.
It's talking about the rental of the unit.
I see that now.
Yeah. So if it's less than 30, if you're the principal, if that's your principal residence, you can rent it for a continuous period of less than one month.
Okay. It was confusing me when I first read it, but I can see that now.
Thank you. Any other questions? I would just encourage everyone to reread it if they wish to send any other recommendations back to the Planning Department before we see this again. Yeah. Okay. So I guess we don't need a resolution because we're just moving it back to the department? Is that correct? Okay. All right. No other questions?
A clarity? I'm, okay.
Yes, you can.
I'm just wondering, Laurel, do you know when, will there be a public meeting for all these applications, November, December? When are we looking at?
Generally, through the chair, generally, we do not hold public meetings in December. The mayor and council, it's, December is a busy month for the mayor and council as well as most residents. If we are able to schedule a meeting in November, we will do that. It depends on availability, because these are, all of these applications are fairly hefty. And if we get some of these amendments done as well prior to the public meeting, like, we get them tightened up, that would also move on to the same public meeting. So it's going to be a fairly hefty public meeting, so we are going to have to, we are going to have to schedule one of the hotels. So it's going to depend on the availability, because with the hotels, November and December tend to be quite busy and to be able to book times. So we'll just have to check with the mayor's office to see what's available for you folks, and then we will also confirm with the hotels. And worse comes to worse, we would be looking at January, but hopefully, we can move some of these through in November.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because we're late with our council meeting, too, so we still have to get it through council before because of the holiday next week, so it'd be tense.
Okay. Thank you for that. That concludes all the reports, and the only other thing is any introduction of new business? No? So I just need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Bobby Kenny, seconded by Chris Fournier. All those in favor? Thank you all, and have a wonderful day.